This is the February Town of Mount Airy Planning Commission, and we'll begin with an opening with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I first want to welcome all those that came out tonight at the end of a beautiful day here in Mount Airy and to all those that are watching in the live stream. Our first order of business is to look at the minutes from last time and to approve or disapprove those minutes. The minutes are in front of each of the commissioners here and those that are attending. Do I have a motion to approve or disapprove these minutes before we discuss them?
I would so move to approve.
The motion's made to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes before us from January? Hearing none, we'll vote on approval of the minutes per the motion. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say nay. The motion has passed. The minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is an opportunity for anyone here from the public to make a statement, normally not on an item already in the agenda for tonight, but a general opportunity for you to express your opinion. If I may first ask for a show of hands of anybody who is here who would like to make a statement. I see one person. Sir, you're welcome to come forward to... John, you have that mic for them? Okay. And sir, if we could ask that you limit their time to three minutes.
Sure. My name's Charles Katsarubis. I live at 4250 Candace Drive. I came to a meeting a while ago where I had brought out this paper and in it, I gave you guys a copy. You took a copy of it and you were going to get back to me about what my concerns were. Nobody ever bothered to get back to me. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. If I could ask for the town staff to talk to you, sir, at the conclusion of this evening?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll move now to the liaisons for both Carroll and Frederick County. And we'll begin with Carroll County Planna Hannah. Come on forward. How are you?
Hope everybody was able to enjoy the weather today. Just some updates for Carroll County. As on your agenda today is the water and sewer amendment.
Can we step outside? Thank you.
On your agenda tonight is the water and sewer amendment, and we will be bringing that amendment to our planning commission in April for their discussion and that forwarding to the county commissioners. We are kicking off our housing study. We are in the process of scheduling some community events to get public input. We are anticipating going around the county to each kind of area, each municipality in April and May. This will be kind of led by our consultants, but it will be a public engagement for people from the public to come in and give their input on the housings. And as I said, that'll be in April or May. And we are working with town staff to schedule that meeting. We are in the process of our priority letter for the state of Maryland. As you know, Maryland 27 is priority number five on that list of priorities. The county commissioners will be discussing this priority letter at their March 14th meeting and their March 21st meeting. And that way, we get it back to the state and signatures for the delegates by April 1st. And then just lastly, we are going to have a public hearing for adult use cannabis text amendment on March 7th, and that will be to receive public comment regarding the adult use cannabis zoning text amendment. And that's all I have.
Are there any commissioner questions for Ms. Weber?
Can you explain the priority letter for Route 27?
Yes. So, the priority letter consists of priorities from around Carroll County. We like to keep the priorities in a consistent priority list just to show that this is our major need year after year after year, and that's how the state gives out their funding. So, for Maryland 27, it was added, I believe it was last year, and that is for Maryland 27 improvements from, I believe it's Lashir Road down to the county line. I'm not sure of the exact verbiage in it, but I know it's improvements for 27.
Does that mean it's going to be widened?
Yeah, I would imagine.
And being that it's number five on the list, does that mean it's five years from now? Or does that mean that it's...
It means it's...
Takeoff this summer.
It's on the list. There's many projects that have been on the list for quite a while. But it's on the list, which is good. But unfortunately, no timeline for when that will actually happen, unfortunately.
Hopefully, the priority letter will make it a priority.
You'd think. And every county in the state has their own priority letter. So, and that's how the state delegates their funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But you just hit on a key thing there, and that is, it stays on the list as that priority, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's been appropriated.
Correct. Correct. And that's... The funds that get appropriated are stated in the consolidated transportation plan, and that comes out every year. And that's the funding... The projects that were chosen to get funding for that year. And they pick projects from these priority letters that they receive from the counties.
So, we still got to keep fingers and toes crossed.
Yeah. And yeah, the more support that you can give to the priority letter and Maryland 27 being on there, the better. The more the state can hear you guys come out and say that you need this, the better.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many priorities are on the list total?
I believe there's five.
So, we're five out of five. Okay, cool. And then...
Top five.
So, you mentioned from Lashir South.
Yes.
What about is 26, 27? Is that being considered at all either?
No. From my understanding of the party letter, it's just from Lashir Road down.
Okay.
Depending on how you look at it. Yep.
The 70 interchange driving it.
Correct.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Hannah, thank you so much.
Yep.
Justin is our Frederick County liaison. Welcome, Justin.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I normally provide you guys with a formal report, but really not much has happened in the last month. There was only one planning commission meeting and nothing really to do with the eastern side of the county. Next month, it's up for site plan review is the Cromwell development, and that's in the New Market area. And then there's also sheets as well as right next to it. That's another site plan. But those are the only two site plans for the whole county, actually, for the next month. And then, just wanted to follow up with the mixed-use moratorium. That's something that isn't really a thing, so I apologize for providing incorrect information.
No problem. So, mixed-use is still being permitted and allowed to go forward?
Yep. But they're just not really happy with the results. So, I'm not necessarily sure what the planning commission's going to do. They were in the process of looking at it last year, and it didn't really move anywhere. And I sort of got that mixed up with some of the other committees that are looking at things, so.
Gotcha. Okay. So, no moratorium?
Nope. Not for mixed-use.
Any commissioner questions?
So, next month, we're going to... I guess when you come back, we'll know more about this Cromwell development from you.
From the cross...
Site plan or whatever that market is.
Yep. It's age-restricted in the New Market. It is on the public hearing web map that we have on our GIS page. If you go onto that, you can view the site plan. And there's all sorts of information on that. And there's also, I believe, the case study and report of that.
Is that on the other side of 144? The Cromwell? Proposed?
On the south side of 70?
Yeah. So, if you're going towards New Market.
I'm not sure.
Is it before 75?
It's right next to the school and right next to Ligonore.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
It almost goes up to the lake, but doesn't quite.
Okay. Gotcha.
Steve, can you address the... Was there a recent vote about England Acres over there? They accelerated the growth? Or the council voted on it?
The county did... The council did vote in favor of that. But my understanding of that is if they wouldn't have approved it, it was just really delaying the... Delaying the approval of building permits five years. But it's still... That would have been... It really was going to happen one way or the other.
Any other commissioner questions?
Other questions?
Oops. I'm sorry.
When you... You were talking about the mixed-use. You said that they weren't happy. Have they said what they're not happy about? Or what's not working?
I think they're just... It's not... It's still... You're still getting pods of Euclidean zoning. It's not integrated well. It's just like there will be housings here, commercials over here, but it's not really that walkable mixed-use development that they're looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Heather?
So, just to be clear, with all the developments happening in New Market, do you know approximately how many units? I'm hearing something like 3,000 units in the New Market area. Is that about right?
I don't know off the top of my head. I thought it was... The Ligonore was like 4,815 or something like that. And I thought that was halfway. But I'm not sure about the municipality in general or what's over there, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be fair, Justin? Because there's a lot of interest in New Market. All of us here are kind of putting the right words for the next 10 years for the town master plan. And so, New Market weighs heavily on what the next 10 years, because I think it's fair to say New Market is growing. And services provided, public services and facilities provided by this town are often the choice of those residents to go east to us to get them versus going west to Frederick City. And so, with that backdrop, would it be... Would it be okay to ask if you could kind of give us a high-level summary of the developments in the New Market slash Ligonore area? And just maybe two bits of information for each one? That is where it is in the approval process? It's a site plan. It's maybe even at permitting. But the second item would be just data with regard to number of dwelling units involved, so we can appreciate kind of the size of what's coming down the road. Is that a fair request?
Yeah. A lot of the stuff is on our website, on our pipeline, but I can kind of make...
Like a one-pager, just to educate us?
I can provide a document that gives a better description.
Okay.
Actually, what I would request for you to give us an overview of in the last 10 years, 15 years, what has been the growth of that whole New Market area? I can remember back 2010, 2012, and there was a lot of... Lot of development that was being approved. And it concerned us at first. And so, we had some... We asked for some perspective from your department at the time. And basically, they said that regardless of what gets approved, it's not going to... If it's more development, then that's not a concern. It's not a responsibility in terms of additional development. And so, we just saw one project after another that was getting approved. And it concerned us in terms of the growth forecast for the greater New Market area. I would be interested to hear over the last 10, 15 years or so, what has been the actual growth of the New Market area? Because I think it's been significant.
Yep. I couldn't...
Fair enough. Justin?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Thank you so much, Justin. Our next agenda item is to discuss an item that actually Ms. Weber brought up, and that is an action requested of this commission by Carroll County as a part of the process that began with the council's deliberation on this topic in January. And I can either defer to John, the town staff, on that backdrop for the public, or I can do a quick sketch. I invite you if you wish.
Yeah. I would be deferring to engineering because they're the ones who ever see that. But it's up to him if he wants to let you...
Yep. Bernie, please. Go ahead. No, 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 no. I defer to the experts, so.
Do you have it, Bernie?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I'll begin. So, the deliberations in January with the council has to do with extending water service from the town water, private water system, to residents within a parcel that is on the outside of the town's boundary. And this parcel is located off of Twin Arch Road, just past Century Drive. It is a trailer park. It is a parcel that is known here in the town as a Twin Arch Trailer Park.
Twin Arch Park.
Mobile Home Park. I'm sorry. Mobile Home Park. Roughly, I believe, 20 residents that are involved in that. And they're currently being provided water through a single well on that parcel that was measured by MDE... I'm sorry. The state as having unacceptable PFAS contamination levels. Am I okay so far?
Yes.
Okay. And so, as a part of that discovery and as a part of MDE testing all the wells back in the 2023 timeframe for PFAS, including the 11 wells within the town, discussions began with the best way to address those high contamination levels for that out-of-town parcel and those 20 nearby residents. And the conclusion was, in the council decision, that the council would move forward with... I'm being careful with my words here. Move forward with the process to do that contingent on getting state funds in order to do it for those non-town residents. And secondly, contingent on the town addressing its PFAS contamination first. Okay. Rarely do I get a head nod through the whole thing. Is that... Am I... Okay. Gotcha. Okay. And so, that's the backdrop for the public. So, where we are is that letter went forward by the mayor to the county commissioners, basically summarizing what I just said. The county in turn said for them to now be the advocate for the town's monies in order to enable that installation for non-town residents, they would need to make that advocacy for us by presenting the 2023 County Water and Sewer Master Plan with an amendment that says we will now also provide service outside of the town to that specific parcel. Amendments to the County Water and Sewer Master Plan are always endorsed by the respective municipal planning commission. So, again, that's why it looped back from Westminster to the town staff, in turn, providing it on our agenda tonight. And there is some sense of expediency to this, I believe, because the county's advocacy to go get those monies has to occur, I believe, very soon. Is that correct, Bernie?
Yes.
Okay. And so, the initial statement that had to come back, I use the word endorse, and I think that's probably appropriate. But we had to sign a statement. The commissioners have to sign a statement saying that this amendment allowing this parcel to get water service from the town, their initial comment was it is consistent with the town's existing 2013 master plan. And when we looked at that, we immediately said we can't sign that, because all seven of us are diligent, as you are, about what you sign. And there's nothing in our 2013 master plan that even comes close to alluding to providing water service outside of the town boundaries. And you would have to say, and why would it? Right? We are focused on water service for the town's boundaries and town residents. So, in the time from that initial offering draft for the county to now take it and go to the state, we've been deliberating on the more accurate words. And I'm going to read that statement unless there's something I left out. Bernie?
No, you're doing a great job.
I'm on a roll. Okay. So, the statement that was worked out, again, because we only sign things that are truthful and in the interests of the town and in concert with our council's decisions and mayor's support. The statement now says, "The Mount Airy Planning Commission hereby certifies that the proposed 2024 spring amendment to the 2023 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan..." I'm going to pause. "...the county looks at amendments to its water and sewer master plan in certain intervals." The next interval coming up is what they call the spring amendment interval. That's why they've given it the name 2024 Spring Amendment. "As it pertains to the Town of Mount Airy, is currently inconsistent with the 2013 Town of Mount Airy Comprehensive Master Plan. The purpose of the amendment is to support the town council's January 24 decision to move forward in the county and the MDE process to provide town water system service to the residents of the Twin Arch Mobile Home Park, contingent on funding to remediate PFAS issues within the town prior to making said connection." So, it's a very long sentence, but I think it wraps up everything that I gave everybody here on background. With town council... I'm sorry. With town attorney discussions, and because we are signing this on behalf of the commission, I've opted to entertain a motion to approve this and have an actual vote on this statement to ensure all the commissioners are aligned with it or may not align with it, to be fair to all the commissioners, rather than edit this unilaterally and then quickly send it up north to Westminster. So, I'll quit talking unless there's an element of this whole thing that I've left out that's crucial for understanding. If not, I've read the statement, and I believe the public has a copy also, John. Yep?
Right. There was not enough copies. There weren't enough copies made for everybody to have one. But if they want a copy, I can easily get that to anybody that's interested.
Fantastic. So, with that, we'll need a motion in a second before we enter into any discussions regarding this wording. So, I'll entertain a motion to either approve the statement as written and read or a motion to disapprove the statement as written and read.
I'll motion to approve the statement as written and read.
Okay. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Butt seconds it. Now, it's open for discussion among the commissioners. Hearing none, the motion again is to approve the statement as written. All those in favor on the commission to approve the statement as written, please say by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those disapproving the statement as written, say nay. Hearing none, the motion has passed. The statement will be signed and sent forward to Carroll County Water.
It is accessible on our website as well, so if somebody's interested in looking. And then, moving on to the next question with the agenda, I'm just curious, the people that we have in the audience, if they're here for the proposed Green Tree Pattern Book or if they're here for the Chapter 5. I wonder if it's worth taking a show of hands just to be cognizant of the individuals here to see if they're...
And adjust our agenda?
Possibly.
Right. Okay. So, that's fair. We want to make best use of everyone's time. Let me just ask for a show of hands of those that are here for the pattern book discussion. So, I think that is the key, right? And then, because you mentioned the Chapter 5 edits, the show of hands for those focused on Chapter 5 master plan discussions. Okay. Well, no, that's good that there's interest in it. That's what that is. So, I believe, John, what we're looking to do here is let's adjust the agenda to move forward. I don't think I need a motion or vote on that. So, unless there's opposition from the commissioners, we will move into a discussion of the pattern book. I will precede that discussion by stating the aim of this discussion on this agenda item is not to get a motion or a vote or any sense of approval or disapproval of this pattern book. We're not at that stage yet. I would say quite frankly and openly to the public that the pattern book and the concept plan is actually making its debut in both the planning commission's view of how these pattern books have to be read and comply with our code and the greater sense of what does it have to say to us? Or what's the harmony that we're looking for as a consequence of the pre-concept plan having been already approved? So, we're at the stage past the pre-concept plan, which was approved by council for MXUCC for the Green Tree Village. We're now into where the developer provides the town a concept plan and a pattern book. And that is now the planning commission's responsibility to put a wire brush to and make sure it complies with the code, et cetera, et cetera. So, we first looked at the pattern book as the developer provided it to us in October 30th, if I'm correct. And it was the same interaction that I'm looking for tonight, and that is for us to just continue to understand and get smart. I'll just add quickly here. We can't do that up here on this dais off to the side by ourselves to get educated and to have these discussions. Maryland doesn't allow that, because that's a forum. That's, I'm sorry, a quorum. And that's the sunshine law that prohibits that. So, although it may appear to some of you here that we're asking rather simple and kind of fundamental questions, it's required that we do that in the public's view. And I think it's also helpful for the public to also fully understand the debut of a pattern book, the debut of a concept plan as it hits the town now on a development such as this. 60 dwelling units, 18,000 square foot commercial building, 18,000 and change. It's often viewed by many as this is our welcome mat on the north side of town, right? It's our gateway on the north side of town coming off of 27 up around Candace. So, all of these are very valid considerations as we, as I use the term, put a wire brush to making it as good as we can with the developer. So, if that's all fair, that's kind of the rules of the road tonight. It's not a vote or a motion or approval. It's continuing education. And so, I'll stop talking in turn to any of the commissioners who may have continued questions. And Frank, if you want to come up to the table with... Yeah. After the commissioner. We'll first start with the commissioner questions, and then I will move into those people who wish to make a public comment. Okay. Yep. So I first turn to the commissioners, if you have any continued questions from October 30th. If not, I'll lead off. First thing that struck me was that, in looking at the layout of the streets and roads for Green Tree Village, I noticed there's five-foot wide sidewalks that are kind of enabling the walkability that we all desire for that 60 dwelling area. But I noticed that on the map, and it could be just me looking at it a certain way, that as the sidewalks wrap around, let's say the central island, okay? They seem to end right where the driveways begin for the villas and the townhomes. But I'm guessing they don't really end, you can walk completely around and across the driveway aprons where they cut into the curb, is that correct? Okay, okay, so you don't have to walk off the sidewalk, walk in the street? Gotcha, okay, that's a good thing. The second thing I have for real quick is, we talk about fences that are for the embankment, we talk about fences that are for the areas in the backyards, and then we talk about fences which are deemed privacy fences between the patios, right? And so I think we discussed last time that the fencing needs to be consistent and black iron style, and I think you've agreed to that. I think the height of the fencing of that nature along the church embankment wall is going to be higher than that which is similar in design that's in the backyards.
Yes, that is, I've had that discussion with Barney...
Right.
That the fencing that is the barricade at the top of the retaining wall will be black wrought iron type fencing, but it may be of a different design based on the strength rating of it, height, and other factors like that.
Okay.
Yes, everything would be black, as far as the fences go.
But when we talk now about, let's take the townhomes or dwelling units that are gonna have their rear facing Candace along the power line right away? So those will also have backyard fencing?
Every house will not come with a fence, there'll be an approved fence that if a homeowner so wishes to install fencing, there'll be one approved style of fence in the HOA covenants and restrictions. It's not that every house is gonna have, be equipped with a backyard fence, no.
Okay.
But we will have one approved, so there's consistency throughout the neighborhood. If you drove, and I think last time we talked a little bit about Brittany Manor, and if you drive through there, most of those fences are black, but there's like three, four, or five different fencing styles that don't always complement each other.
Correct.
And one of them's chain link, and we said, no chain link for a number of reasons. We don't like the idea of kids wanting, chain link encourages kids to climb, it seems like, and especially that one on the back near the retaining wall, we don't want any kind of thing, any kind of engagement there. The only other thing I will say to this also, is there's the commercial component to the property, and that project may have some fencing on it that will be black, but it may be of a different height or characteristic than the residential components.
Okay, so the backyards for the dwelling units will not come with black wrought iron fencing? That is a package dependent upon the buyer. However, those attached dwellings that have adjacent patios, they will have a privacy fence, so that will be a provided fence, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Most of the time I've seen that eight to 10-foot section of privacy fence between the two, most projects I've seen, that's been done in white. What's your experience with that, Kevin?
To match the trim of the house, so if it's beige trim, it would be a beige fence, if it was a white trim, it'd be...
Okay, okay.
So that eight to 12-foot section of privacy fence would, as Kevin said, typically match the trim color of the house, not the black wrought iron that would be a perimeter fence for a dog or to contain, you know, to identify a play area for your kids and that kind of thing.
Gotcha. Just two more quick points, and then I'll turn to my fellow commissioners. The next one is, when we looked at the pictures last time and this time, the front elevations and facades seem to have a consistent stone thread all the way across the clusters, I'm gonna call them clusters, okay? And so I think we had voiced a desire for a little more variation, a little more variety. So we did have kind of this six cluster unit that looks like one big cluster with, I'm gonna use the term stripe. So you need to break up that front elevation with some architectural attraction, because I don't see the attraction in that design right now.
So let me rewind a step. As you know, I'm Frank Protopan, I'm the developer for Green Tree. And in the pattern book, a lot of times there's a parentheses and says builder slash developer.
Right.
Well, those are actually two different people. I'm the developer, Kevin Scott is here, he is been employed by NVR for 20 years, lives in the Frederick County marketplace. We've worked with Kevin and NVR, you know, since, I guess the first time I worked with NVR was 27 years ago when I bought Nottingham Village. And they bought lots and built in Nottingham, 60 to 70 lots in Nottingham they bought from us, they bought 60 to 70 lots in Sterling Glen from us. We worked with them at our Rain Cliff project in Sykesville, which we've referred to, and I believe several of the members have visited, so we have a long working relationship. So Kevin and I talked today about what can they do to step up that elevation. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I don't know who's familiar with NVR, but we're national home builder headquartered in Reston, we have local offices all over the area, one in Frederick, in fact. We have architectural services in Frederick, we have a home building plan in Thurmont. I'm office in Columbia, and I'm in land acquisition, so I work with folks like Frank all the time, because we learned a long time ago, we're good at building houses, we're terrible at developing land. So we partner with guys like him, they run things through entitlements, get approvals, develop the ground, and then we buy house pads. As we saw the awful photo that was in the initial pattern book, we have multiple facades we can put on houses and still keep the floor plan that is intended. So admittedly, this is kind of a base elevation that we had here, we can add stone, we can add varying brick patterns. I brought our entire blueprints here to show you all the different variations we can have, and it's really market-driven, is the truth of it.
That's fair.
Or in certain jurisdictions like yourselves, if there's a preference you guys have, but then you get into subjective preferences. But I would agree that it needs to be a higher quality finish than what was represented here.
Great, great.
I think it would be, you know, it would probably be stone brick to grade standard, variation of vinyl siding and brick and stone fronts. So, point taken and duly noted.
And some type of covered roof over the front door.
Exactly.
All the units.
Right. And those entrances, and those garage doors, the preference should not be they're all in a straight line?
No, they won't be, we have...
You should vary that.
We have two-foot offsets.
Okay, okay.
And the other thing too, in the rendering, which is, the bad thing with that rendering is, it was taken on of a unit that was six units wide, all one elevation. Well, I always joked that they named Mount Airy correctly, because it's rocky and windy and sloped. So everything in that project, in Green Tree, is gonna be built on where there's a slope to the road. So each of those buildings is gonna step probably anywhere from 18 inches to two feet between, so because of that, I know in our last meeting, somebody commented how the ridge lines all lined up. Well, just the fact that there's steps in those foundations, all those ridge lines are gonna change, so, and again, that could be hard to visualize or communicate in a 2D picture, but, and the other thing too is, so there's change in elevation as you go down the street, there's also an offset between units, where one steps forward and back two feet.
Good.
So it's not, you know, one straight wall that just steps every 22 feet for each unit.
That's good.
So because of that in and out, that changes your elevation of your pitch...
Okay.
Of the ridges, and then the fact that it steps down with the changing grade.
The last item I wanted to bring to the attention, and again, it's a bit of a reminder, back on October 30th, we talked about the lack of a landscape architectural plan. And our code, Chapter 98-61 lists the architectural, the landscaping architectural plan as a necessary ingredient of the pattern book, and I knew, if I recall correctly, you were still working through stormwater management issues in order to lay down where are trees and shrubbery. And this topic was keen to the residents that go up and down Kansas, Candace, excuse me, Kansas. In particular, their view looking from Candace up that slope into the rear of those townhomes that are gonna border along the right of way of the power line. So kind of put yourself there, I'm totally in agreement with them from that perspective, and so I'm thinking you're going to be showing us some rather mature tree screening that's gonna go in the backyards, that's consistent with whatever the power company will allow, right? Because the right of way is bare for reasons. And so somehow you're gonna coordinate that so that we have some screening there on the back of those homes, is that fair?
That's, yes.
Okay.
Remember, I said I'm the developer on this project, I've also in my career been a home builder, so I know what it takes to be marketable, you know, when a consumer walks through the door and says, I like that lot, but I don't wanna look at the power lines, or I don't wanna look at, you know, Candace Road.
Right.
What can we do? You know, an evergreen tree that, you know, grows, you know, one to two feet a year is probably gonna be part of that landscape plan to buffer that area.
Right.
The one comment, I know people have asked about the landscape plan for the commercial site. Actually, our submitter to Carroll County asked us to remove that, not include that, because that will be done on the site plan for the commercial site. So that whole site plan is managed completely separately.
Okay. Okay, but what I'm assured here is that at some point, after stormwater management issues, and after coordination with the power company for what is allowed, there will be some screening, in particular...
Absolutely.
On the Candace parallel side behind those dwelling units.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
And I don't know if I did say this, my memory's good, but it's short. We do intend to put decks on the back, on the rear of all the units, either a deck or a patio.
Okay.
So those units will all have a deck, so, you know, they'll be done all at one time, you know, as the house is being built, so it's gonna be consistent, standard size, standard uniform finishes and railings, and so it'll have a very clean appearance. It won't be, you know, one person builds one that's twice the size of his neighbors and overbears, is overbearing on the, you know, from the street.
And the picture in the pattern book right now of the rear of attached dwelling units, is that representative of what we are going to expect, or is that a bad picture? On page six.
It's not a good picture. It's not a good picture.
Picture, that's all I need to know, because I'm taking way too much time, and so it's not a good picture, it's not representative of what the folks on Candace may see through whatever screening is there. Okay, so we're gonna see an improvement?
Yes.
Well, that picture shows very little screening.
It shows no screening, yeah, right, right.
There's a couple on, you know, and again, I don't know where this picture was taken.
Okay.
This could open back to a park or open space that...
I got you.
They don't want, you know, it could be a path area back there, and sometimes they don't like a lot of large landscaping around that, just because of security. If there's a, you know, there's these pathways that we always talk about here.
That's fair.
You know, sometimes you don't wanna overlandscape those areas because of the security issue.
Gotcha, thanks, thanks for that. And next commissioner?
I had a couple concerns, which has already been addressed, about the townhouses. Again, they're very standard, no thrills, no nothing, need to see more on that. The villas, I do not like the triangles at all, it's not great. I think we need to have variations in that as well. Mount Airy is very unique, and the downtown of Mount Airy, we need to stray away from contemporary, traditional, we need to go back to what Mount Airy looks like, and not so contemporary or industrial-like. So I'd like to see that also. On the map, there is no guest parking or overflow parking, and we've addressed this on the last meeting, is that I don't see anything for overflow except for commercial, and residential should not be parking in commercial whatsoever, that is commercial space and commercial space only. So with the townhouses, we definitely need to see overflow parking, I wanna see that. And I think that's all I had for right now.
Good points. Any other commissioner questions? Steve?
So just to pee back on the housing points, I know I've expressed it to you before, now we got our house builder here. When you drive down Main Street and you come up and you see Victorian houses, you see turn-of-the-century brickwork, stonework, you see ornamental structures and cornices, that's kind of the influence I think we want to tie in to any of these mixed uses that are off of Main Street, something a little more that follows those patterns.
Are you talking specifically to the single families that face Main Street?
Ideally, they all kind of share in that, and the single families off of Main Street, really, if you look on Main Street, you have a lot of oversized patios, covered porches, I'm sorry, out front, and they have that Victorian style, so something to consider that would match the rest of Main Street as well. And then deviate a little bit with the rest of them, but try to draw some kind of influence off of that. The other thing is, you talked about landscaping here, but I haven't heard you mention trying to, we're trying to save some of the trees that we can, but also anything that we have to add, make sure they're native species when they're included. And the other thing is, the multi-sport court that is in here now, how close is that to the end house there? Are you estimating? Looks like it's right up on the road, but it's right off of that house.
I don't have a scale with me.
Just looking at this overview, it just, to me, it looks like it's literally right on top of our unit.
There's a retaining wall between unit, Villa 16...
Okay.
And the multi, so that steps down...
To the court?
To the court.
Okay.
That's why there's that five-foot sidewalk that accesses it. And again, some of these areas here are gonna be tweaked a little bit. In the past month, I've had meetings with Martin Covington from Carroll County, who reviews the stormwater management, as well as with John and Barney on, we were getting responses from the county that contradicted some of the things that Barney and John wanted to see in the plan, and vice versa, so we kind of had a meeting of the minds to make sure we were all on the same page. So with that being said, Van Moore's working on modifying the stormwater management plan to make both those parties happy, and based on that, there will be a little tweak to some of the layout in that area.
Okay, okay. That's all I have for you.
Any other commissioner questions? Heather?
Just a couple of comments. I noticed in the townhomes, it mentions that there will be garage doors with and without panel windows, is there some reason we couldn't be consistent and just have them all have windows?
Or all not?
No, there's no reason.
Okay. I mean, I think having windows...
That was Ron's, just, I think he just did that to provide flexibility.
All right, and then kind of to Kim's earlier point, you know, you talk in the townhomes about the dormers are provided to eliminate uniform roof lines, and then I flip over to the villas, and they have uniform roof lines, and I understand too with the elevation that, you know, they'll vary in height, but they just look exactly alike from the front, you know, the triangles. Also, there's mention of, in the townhomes, that for parking, there would probably be three to four spots because of the double car driveway and garage, but then in the other types of homes, it says that there will be parking for four vehicles, so it, like in the townhomes, it's taking into account that you might use the garage for other things, but in the villas and the single families, it doesn't. So I'm just wondering, like, what's the total, what are the parking calculations? Will we see the parking calculations to ensure that they align?
Typically, for each of those units, we... Typically, for each of those units, we assume there's two parking spots in a garage. And then, because the garage is double-wide, there's two parking, and the driveway's deep enough to allow two parking spots in the driveway.
Right. But it's not realistic because if you have two cars in front and two cars in the garage, then you can't back, I mean, there's no, I guess to Kim's earlier point, there's just no other place to park in the neighborhood even temporarily. And even street parking, I think, would be difficult just because of the proximity of the townhomes, like, the blocks of townhomes to each other. And again, I just think that it can set up issues for parking, and if I were living there, I would not want that. Are the mailboxes for the single families on the, on Main Street, or are they gonna be?
Cluster box.
The cluster box? Okay, behind it?
Actually, the town just did clusters on Main Street, what, three years ago, four years ago?
Yeah, but not that far.
Well, yeah, but I mean-
Yeah, on Main Street.
The post office, anytime they can, they can require cluster boxes, they're gonna require cluster boxes.
Yeah, I was just curious. And then, you mentioned the playground is accessible to all. Do you mean that it's like ADA-approved, as in like, it's accessible to all children of all needs, or is it just accessible, meaning like anyone can walk to it?
It looks like there's a sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk. I don't know what the grade of that sidewalk is, so I can't, I can't say it meets all the elevation requirements of an ADA sidewalk.
Well, I'm talking about the playground itself. I was just curious whether the playground itself would be accessible to children of all needs.
Yeah, I mean, it-
I think it would have to be-
I mean, most of the playgrounds, they were typically covered in either a mulch or rubber-type mulch, which, I mean, I have a very good friend who's in a wheelchair, and I've taken him to the beach before, and, yeah, we've taken him to the beach, but it's a chore. You know, it's not an easy access.
I was just curious, because we have that really nice one down at Watkins', and I didn't know if it would be some, I just read designed to be accessible to all, and I was just curious what that meant, if it was gonna be something similar to that with that type of surface and all that. And then, is there any concern with Candace Drive? There's no, as far as I recall, there's no lines on that road or anything. Is that gonna be marked at some point?
It's a county road. I don't know if you know any better than I say-
It's a county road, so we don't have any control over that.
But you can request it, or?
We can always put it on their list of things to do.
Well, it seems like a major issue because you're, that is the main access point, if I'm reading this correctly, that's the main access point into the commercial center. And so, if you're gonna have, like, you've got a neighborhood, you have people who live on that road, and then you have this development coming in, and then you have no, like, lane, you know, turn lanes or anything like that, so.
I think the primary access is actually through, off of Main Street. That's a secondary access that was asked by town staff, I think at our first conference call three years ago, that we added.
Oh, yes, a secondary access, you're right. But still, I mean, if it's an access, people will use it, and I'm just thinking that some sort of stripes on the road might be helpful. So, yeah. I don't know whose responsibility it is, I'm just saying it for the record, so, that's all I had.
Martina?
I had a quick question. You mentioned earlier about the fencing going around the commercial. It's gonna be the same black?
It'll be black.
Okay. And where would it be?
I don't know who the end-user of the commercial's gonna be yet.
Okay.
So, there may not be any fencing around the commercial.
Oh, okay, it's not definite.
But if there was, we would mandate that it would be a black fence similar. Again, the size and the type of fencing may vary from what you typically see. You know, there's commercial-type fencing and there's residential fencing. And they're, you know, the residential's usually a more, a little more economical, so it's not quite as heavy-gauge product as you would see in a commercial application.
Okay, so it's a possibility, it's not definite yet, that you're gonna have that?
I just wanted to throw that out there, that could be a possibility, but it's not, I'm not saying it is gonna have fencing for the commercial. I mean, there'll be some type of enclosure for the dumpster.
Oh, right, right.
And there's some fencing that usually is fencing slash gate that's associated with that. But as far as fencing it, you know, it all depends on the end-user.
Yeah, because now I'm wondering, you know, if there's the parking issue for the homes that are further down, if they have to park in commercial, if there's a fence, if that's gonna make it easier or harder to walk to where they need to get in the townhomes, if they have to use that.
Well, anything I'd say is, we wouldn't install, or, if I end up building the commercial and retaining it as rental, there wouldn't be a fence there unless, every now and then you'll see like a celebratory-type learning center.
Right.
And they require some fencing based on their guidelines. But it wouldn't be, and in that situation, it's up adjacent to the building, and that would all have to be dealt with at the site plan stage of the process.
Which you guys will be approving.
Right.
So, ultimately, whatever, whatever development of that site happens, it'll come in front of you for final approval through concept, primary, final.
Right. And then, on the elevation for the villas and the townhomes, I know you talked about, we have the ones that are facing Main Street that we would like to look a certain way, but I think we want the whole neighborhood to be consistent with something that would look like Mount Airy. They just don't look like Mount Airy, the little side triangles and the, you know, where the doors are connected together. It's, I mean, for lack of a better term, it's just not charming, small-town look.
The villas are gonna be a little more restrictive as far as, you know, the doors recessed and that area bumps forward. So, if it's not a turned gable roof, then it's a lean-to roof, which wouldn't really work real well in that situation. We'd have to scratch our head on that a little more, but I'm not sure, you know, I think there's gonna have to be some type of turned gable or turned roofline for the villas. You know, what details and accents we add to that is gonna be, you know, our biggest challenge there.
Okay.
I would say probably look at wildwood because that is, villas there, and so it needs to be something similar to wildwood. And they have double-car garages there, if I'm not mistaken. I'm pretty sure they have double-car garages, I think.
Hmm, I don't know.
Yeah, there's a couple, right?
There'd be a couple, but most of them are single-car.
They're single-car.
Okay.
These are double, right? These villas.
They don't have the whole triangle look to it, and each home looks a little bit, or each cluster looks a little bit different, but they're all, they all look the same as far as the pattern of them. So, I think we need to have something similar to wildwood.
Any other commissioner questions?
Just, I'm gonna talk about the parking real quick. So, the overflow parking, I believe that it was discussed in one of our previous meetings, that this area where the playground and the pickleball court, or the multipurpose court, excuse me, taking that retaining wall, bumping it back and pulling that sidewalk and everything back to put some street parking along that green tree, along Green Tree Circle, thank you very much. And if you back that up and you can get, you know, maybe four or five cars in that area and moving the fence, just kinda moving the top of that fence line over towards the sidewalk as well as the curb, you could get some parking out of that, I think. And down at the end of the, the end of the development in the circle, if that circle was enlarged just a little bit more, you might be able to get some, some nice parking in that area, again, along the sidewalk or along that curb, around that corner there, to keep, A, all of those cars down one end of the street, and B, people that are visiting the park that can't maybe walk that well, could park against there.
Can I ask Barney a question on that? What's the town's thoughts on snow removal for stuff like that?
Yeah, I mean, when you have cars that are perpendicular, I mean, all we're doing is plowing snow into the back of the cars. I mean, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. I know cul-de-sacs are always a big question mark when it comes to snow removal.
Right.
We've been lucky the last three years, we haven't had much to deal with, but sometime we're gonna pay the fall for-
If I remember correctly, I think all these roads are 34-foot wide.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so you have 34-foot wide roads, it's bigger than some of the townhouse communities that you'll see, their roads, they're, they might only be 24-foot wide. So, this is similar to Summit Ridge, those are mostly 34-foot wide roads. You're gonna have, be able to have parking on the street, you know, parallel parking in addition to all the driveways, so.
So, Bernie, in your opinion, you think that the road is adequate right now, Green Tree, Green Tree Lane? Circle, sorry, I always wanna say Green Tree Lane. You think that that width at, I believe it says 50, or 34, it says 34? You believe that's wide enough for people to park along that side street to go to the park without it being bumped?
Yeah, I think so. I don't have the plan right in front of me, but 34-foot's certainly wide enough to have two-way traffic with cars parked on at least one side.
Okay.
Yep.
I just, you know, designating parking is always an important thing for people, or they just park wherever they want.
True.
And that can lead to angry citizens.
One thing to comment on, on your, or to address your comment on, at the end of the cul-de-sac, the area on the, I guess it's the north side of that cul-de-sac?
Mm-hmm.
The lowest, that's where most of that stormwater management facility's gonna be.
Yeah, that's the sand filter area, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I'll just echo off of Commissioner Bead's comment on that, because that open-space path that's gonna go down to the lower end of that whole plat is, is going to be deeded to the town, correct? That path that goes down to the bottom is gonna be deeded to the town, right? So, that, I believe that-
I was just sure where, I was looking to Barney to make sure that-
Coming off the end of the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
End of the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
That would be the sewer access, but also a walking path.
Right, for any town resident.
Yes.
So, again, kinda riffing off of what he said, if any town resident wishes to go and enjoy that walk down to that lower area, they're gonna have to park in that circle. And pretty soon, that circle's gonna fill up. And they're gonna encroach on the residents' parking areas, and voila, we have the issue that Brian's fearful of, and that is, you know, we have, we have friction. So, if we're gonna deed open space to the town for that kind of activity, we ought to think in terms of where the people are gonna park. They're not gonna park on Candace and, you know, hoof it over. They're gonna go in the community and they're gonna go to that keyhole cul-de-sac, I think.
Just, so, yes, that is going to the town, but the sports court and that's HOA property.
That's HOA, correct.
Yeah.
That's all walkability within three to four minutes within the neighborhood.
Gotcha.
And is it, is it necessary that we have that circle?
You gotta have that for a fire truck to turn around.
But if you don't have that, the island, sorry, the island, that is right in front of T1 Townhouse?
Yeah.
That tent.
That's currently where the community mailbox is located.
That's where, can we move the mailboxes somewhere else? Because that, I don't, I think it's just a waste.
I don't think you'd want just a huge 80-by-80 area that looks like a parking lot out in front of those houses. I think, I think that island where the mailboxes are kinda softens it.
People are gonna park on it. They're gonna park up against that island. If they're getting, going to get their mail, they're not gonna go park their car in their driveway.
They're gonna stop there.
They're gonna stop there.
As Barney talked or mentioned, the road's 34-feet wide. I mean, there's subdivisions where the road is 18 and 20-feet wide for two-way traffic, but that has no parking on the side. So, if you say 20, I mean, 34 is, 34 is what we have at nine, which is, a lot of times, those have, houses that have parking on both sides of the road.
Right, but I think the point being made, since we have cluster mailboxes now as a reality, people coming home from work or at the end of the day, they're gonna stop at that location temporarily, admittedly, but they're gonna stop long enough in order to go get their mail.
Get their mail, talk to their neighbor, that's picking up their mail, too.
It could be three, four cars at any one time, possibly. So, that's, I think, the point she's emphasizing.
I guess I was looking at it differently, you know, there are signs that say no stopping anytime, there are signs that say no parking anytime. There's a difference between, in my eyes, as far as stopping versus parking.
I gotcha.
Why couldn't we put clusters? I live in a townhouse community, and we have clusters in between each, like, set of 10, and then there's a cluster on each side of the 10.
What'll happen is I have to go to the postmaster and get their approval. So, the postmaster has to give me a blessing on where we put them. So, we put what we, we expect is gonna be acceptable to the postmaster, but it doesn't mean it's gonna be acceptable. They, they get-
Understood.
Well, so the postmaster needs to also look at this.
But I think the suggestion is a good solution. Let people get on home, park in their driveways, short walk to the cluster that may be the next cluster over.
Cluster over, yeah.
The next cluster there, I'll see for those, and I'll have to look and see where all Ron has.
They're distributed, so they're not all in one place.
It's not like it's, there's not gonna be 60 mailboxes at that one location, is what I'm trying to say. They're gonna be, there's gonna be more than one.
So, it doesn't look like there's gonna be a cluster in that, in that roundabout, 'cause I see cluster, if that's it, and there's boxes in between each cluster, then what's supposed to go in that island? 'Cause there's no drawing in here that simulates that there's gonna be a cluster box. There's nothing there. So, then, oh, okay, I see it. It just doesn't, it's not drawn, like everything else.
Question about the path, the walking path. Before, I thought that the path was this one coming out of the cul-de-sac and then down into that space. Am I also seeing like a left turn that connects over to Summit Ridge? Or is that, is that existing, or is that new?
That'll be, that'll be extended as part of the subdivision.
Right away. It actually goes three places. So, one goes to Scotch Heather, one heads up towards Sterling Glen, which is where the sewer right-of-way goes to. And then, there's another path that heads to, connect to the path that goes between Sterling Glen and Summit Ridge. So, there's another path over by the Storm Pond that it'll also connect to.
And then, what is the, is this open, open space down here that's marked, it's kinda hard to see on this paper, but is that all wooded? Like, once you get down there, what's there?
Yeah, there's a stream and it's all natural open space.
Okay, I didn't know if it was like, you know, you'd have to take out your machete and, you know, cut through the leaves to actually walk in there, if it was like, you could actually walk through it? If it was just like, you get to there and it's just like, okay, there's no place to go, okay. All right, thanks.
If there's a path, we'd say it's 12-feet wide for, if it needs vehicular access to it, and 10-feet wide if it's-
Gotcha. Any other commissioner questions?
I'm still with you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, for the townhomes, we mentioned earlier having a white fence between delineating the properties from the neighbor to neighbor, right? So, it'd be white, probably six feet, maybe five or six feet, right? Something like that? But we're also talking about a black iron fence that would go to complete it if they wanted to complete that job, right? So, if they have the white vinyl fence, would it be conducive to the neighbors to just complete the white vinyl fence and have that be the fencing choice, since you're already putting that divider fence in? Does that make sense?
I would be fine with that personally. Then, it's what we've done in other communities very successfully.
You have, obviously-
The key really is just no chain link, no-
No chain link, yeah.
Like, wild variances between neighbors. It's consistency that we strive for, so.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe the, the black fence is something that perimeters the community as well as the retaining walls, but the white fence is what they use for the actual individual groups. And you mentioned, as everyone else has, about-
We don't intend to, again, put fencing around each rear property.
Oh, I know, you're just putting a little bit in there to divide from the neighbors.
Right. So, again, if somebody, once a person buys a house, if they decide they, they wanna fence it, there'll be one or two approved designs that, that we work with you as a, as a body and say, here's the two, here's a white privacy fence- Here's a white privacy fence that that's approved.
Right.
Or a black chain link, or not chain link, black wrought iron.
Yep.
These are the the two, and we'll give them, you know, one or two Carroll Fence Company or, you know, sources that they could can call and and get pricing on.
As as far as the elevations, and we talked about that with the townhomes, how they'll slope down and up going down. Would that be the same situation with the villas as well? Once the design is updated, they'll also slope downward and upward?
This this whole job slopes from Main Street down. So every every building, every twenty to twenty-eight feet, the villas are twenty-eight feet wide, the townhomes are twenty-two feet wide. Every twenty-two to twenty-eight feet, there's gonna be an eighteen to two-foot change in elevation.
Again, if you look at page seven, you'll see the rear elevation of the.
I did see that, yeah.
You can see that they're stepping down.
Yeah.
At eighteen to two.
Yeah, the the rear elevation I see that that step down is, is there? So we're talking about roof designs, I believe it's been brought up a little bit. If we're going with asphalt shingle, is there a way to have variances in color? Like a light gray, black, something that, depending on the house color itself?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We've we've found it's better to be one throughout the community, though, because that that can start to look a little.
Can look a little odd?
Odd.
Yeah.
Inconsistent.
Inconsistent.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions from the commissioner?
Two, Steve? Quick things, real quick. I didn't think before, but the the island with the mailbox, why put the mailbox on the island and not on the side where people don't have to cross the road?
I mean, that's where Ron showed it. Again, we could put it wherever.
Just a thought.
Providing that the the postmaster says, I'm okay with that. And I don't know what their criteria is, but they obviously have some criteria, because they they can be pretty opinionated.
Okay, just just the thought about having them cross the road, just it'd make more sense if it was on the side. And just a clarification, so it's a retaining wall by the playground support court. And there's a fence that goes over the retaining wall?
There's a fence on the high side of the retaining wall to keep anybody from.
And it's a four-foot fence?
No.
No.
No? Four-foot height retaining wall fence?
Six or eight.
Six, eight, I think.
Okay, yeah, because my only thing is, if there's no stairs or ramp or anything, because I just see kids playground and they're gonna walk and see it. And like, I don't want to walk around, so I don't know if there's a way.
Like walking around, if they can just go directly at something.
There to make some type of little ramp or stairs in between that comes right off of Green Tree Circle by the the houses there? Because I I just picture a problem. They have two ways to get to the the sport court and the.
Again, as I mentioned, some of this area is gonna be tweaked, and I haven't seen Ron's final revisions based on the stormwater management changes he's working on. So that question, you know, we we should probably visit or revisit once once we get a revision to
Okay.
the layout for this area of the project.
Okay, thank you.
And and I'll just, as a suffix onto the comment, I think that that retaining wall that's adjoining with the Baptist church at its highest point, I believe, is somewhere in the thirty, forty-foot height. Is that correct?
About thirty feet.
About thirty feet, so we all understand then. You've you've got kids up on the higher level in this community now on a playground. You want a high wrought iron fence, you know. You know, I don't bounce well at thirty feet, so, you know. It's it's an imperative, yeah.
I do have one other point that I want to make sure we get across tonight that that some members have raised in the past, and I want to make sure they hear it from from Kevin as the builder. And one of the questions come up, and it's not very prevalent in this marketplace, but other marketplace where they've seen, somebody's seen projects like this become rental projects. So let me defer that to Kevin, where, and I've told you this will not be, it's a for-sale project, but let me defer to Kevin on on how.
On if we rent them, or?
What you do as far as an investor program.
Oh, we're we're very strict with allowing investor sales. So we'll only allow, a community this size, we would allow probably no more than one investor sale. And that's identified through the mortgage process. You need, you know, if it's not your primary place of residence, you get a different, much different interest rate. And and that's that's one to protect the the community and the image of the community, but it's also self-serving. I mean, we don't want rentals popping up on the market while we're trying to sell homes against them. We would be creating our own competition. So we are strictly for sale. Don't even consider the rental market.
Okay.
If that addresses your.
Yeah.
I think that was, I think I got that question from this side of the.
It was like this side of the room, wasn't it? I can't remember.
Hopefully, now that you've heard it more than once, and you've heard it from a second source.
We don't want to see Realtor signs, no.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Before I go to the public here, I just have one more course check, and that is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bernie, at one point, there was deliberations with the architect on curb radiuses and access for fire apparatus. And for long length, let's call them supply trucks into the commercial area, you know, fifty-three-foot-long trailers at the worst, coming in the entrance off of eight oh eight Main Street and weaving their way into the commercial parking lot. Again, I just need, we're okay on those radiuses, because to me, just looking at it, it looks like there's there's a tight turning radius for fire trucks and those kind of apparatus. Are we clear on all that?
Yeah, probably the next stage, we would have them actually draw in those to show that that those radius work.
Okay, and we will get a Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company stamp of approval on the apparatus question?
Sure, yeah, we can. But there's there's standards for the size of the trucks that would enter there and stuff that they would show. Those type of vehicles would make those turns no problem.
Okay.
But we would we would go through that exercise at the next stage.
Yeah, it's just a concern at this point. You know, I can't tell, I'm not the guy that does that kind of traffic, kind of architecture, but I just want to make sure we don't have an issue with a huge problem with getting a long truck, a ladder truck from the company into that area for some poor design.
Even an eighteen-wheeler.
Right.
Delivering goods to one of the businesses.
Correct.
If there's a restaurant there, they need like a Cisco truck come in.
Right, exactly. So so at this point, what I'd like to do, if I could ask you two gentlemen to stay and for now offering time for public questions, comments on this. I think that mic is still on.
Should still be on, yes.
So I I think I saw a healthy show of hands, so I would just kindly ask that you, you know, try to keep your points to a reasonable time and maybe two or three high points. There's also an avenue through the town website for you to provide comments to the planning commission through Mr. Breeding's office. So even if you don't want to be vocal tonight, there's an avenue here for you to give us input into what you're seeing in this preliminary pattern book. So with all that, I invite anyone who wishes to talk to a particular topic on this draft pattern book, I invite you to come up to this mic over here. Okay. Please, come on up. And if you could just give us your name, that would be a great lead-in, sir.
All right, my name's Lee McBride. I live on Candace Drive. I'm county, not city, so. I've got a a few questions here. I hope they're gonna be short.
Can you come a little closer, gentlemen?
Okay. Is that good?
You can lift it up if you like.
Just the mic is off, there you go.
Okay, all right, okay. Number one, looking at the plans, it looks like there's only one dumpster for the commercial. Is that correct?
Again, that will be managed when the site plan for the commercial is applied to the county.
All right.
And depending on who the end users are, they may require an additional. It's not uncommon, like if you have a restaurant, they have a separate dumpster for the restaurant because they're a high user. There may be, you know, a separate recycling-type container.
Okay, okay, and. And when that site plan comes out, y'all get notified, and do we get notified? Like you put the signs up and all that kind of stuff? Okay. All right, and second thing, do y'all have ordinances for dumpsters for the town? Do they have to be like enclosed? Do they have to be?
Yeah, it'll be part of the site plan, and yeah, there's there's enclosures with doors, as Frank.
Okay, and that'll be part of it?
That'll be part of that site development plan, yeah.
All right, okay. Number two, the the well is already there, right? I mean, there's already a well on the property.
Water allocated?
Water allocated.
No well.
There's not, okay. I thought I saw that in the thing, that there was already a well there functioning, so.
Yeah, there there's no well on that site.
Okay.
We are, the water is already reserved for that in our water system.
Okay, and no new well?
No new well, correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, and then to go along with one of the things you brought up about coming down Candace Drive, I mean, if you just look at page six and you look at what you guys see on the top, and you look at what we see on the bottom, it's a big difference. Now, I know we're talking about landscaping. There is a landscaping plan as the back page of this this thing. And it has like, I think, twelve redbud trees, I think, is what's in there. Yeah. And hopefully, that's not the real plan, but that's what is down there for right now. So I would like to just bring that up, that I don't think that's enough, and redbuds are not evergreens. So half the year, you're gonna see what's behind them anyway.
Right, now that, it's it's a good point, and let me just inject, it's a good point. Use, so this is the what we would deem a start of a landscaping plan.
Okay.
It doesn't have the full details that are in a complete comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So it's a pretty good teaser as to where stuff may be planted. But but again, keep going, sir.
Okay. The the open space that she was talking about down at the bottom, there's no plans to cut any of those trees or anything down? Is that just gonna stay like it is?
There'll be a path that'll go, that'll be built through there to gain access to the three different access points Barney spoke to, but the majority of those trees will remain.
Okay, all right, and.
But I'm sure there's gonna be something that comes down.
Right, there there is a pathway that has to go through, so they will cut some.
But just for the pathway?
Just for the pathway.
Okay.
Its utilities going through also, what water and sewer lines going through there.
Okay.
And the path is basically gonna be on top of the water.
Top of it, okay, all right, okay.
Makes it easier access.
All right, and nothing going up towards Candace Drive, right?
None shown going towards Candace Drive.
Not like sidewalks.
All right. And then I guess the other thing was about commercial landscaping, which sounds like we're not ready for. Is there gonna be a traffic study done for this?
There's already been one done.
There's already been one done. Have, is there anywhere I can see the results?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We can certainly share them, yes.
Okay.
Let's get that, yeah.
Absolutely.
And you guys think it looks okay?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm coming up Candace Drive. If I want to take a left, if there's more than six or seven cars, I'm not gonna be able to do it, so.
I I will say, and to Heather's point also, today I did send a message to Development Review in Carroll County to make sure that Carroll County DPW has seen a copy of these plans. So if they have any comments on Candace Drive at that intersection at Main Street, that I want to make sure that they weigh in on that, because it's not the town's road, it's the county's road. But I want to make sure that the DPW has a copy of that.
Okay. All right, okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. Are there any other public comments inviting? Then hearing no more, then I close public comments on this agenda item, and I'll close with one more comment, and that is this concept plan and the pattern book, as I mentioned, is up for the planning commission's approval as presented in coordination between the town staff and the developer. As part of that, our Town Code twenty-five dash five also requires that we do an adequate public facilities ordinance review. And so to the point being made by the gentleman just now, with respect to the intersection of Candace and eight oh eight or Main Street, that stop sign there, traffic or roads and traffic control devices is one of the seven areas that we have to evaluate in the assessment of it being adequate in its current state. So I hope I'm getting to his concern and any other concerns that you have. Those other seven areas can be found in our code in twenty-five dash five, but it includes schools, it includes adequate water, sewer, police, fire EMS, and so forth. So all of those public area services, that's what they're considered, will be assessed and reviewed and determined by this commission as being either adequate, approaching inadequate, or inadequate. And the assessment in any of those three judgments in those seven areas then will drive the actions by the town with respect to moving forward on the plan. Anything that I have said here is foreign to, no, we're all, it's good to be on the same page, isn't it? All right, okay, thank you, gentlemen. We need to move on now.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hopefully, we answered some questions and added some clarity to.
Right.
And we got some homework, right? We guys got some homework to do. Yes.
Again, thank you, and we're gonna move now to the chapter five review of the master plan that we're working on. I alluded to that earlier. As backdrop for the public here, each of these chapters may or may not have linkage to an existing town commission or board and their particular area of expertise. When we get into chapters like chapter seven, which addresses roads as an element of our municipal tenure plan, we would, of course, tap into the consulting with our Streets and Roads Commission, et cetera, et cetera. And so chapter five is our municipal growth element, and within that chapter five from twenty thirteen's version, there are two areas that we wanted to have some good input from and consulting with other other boards and commissions, and so one of the areas is public safety within chapter five municipal growth. Twenty thirteen plan in chapter five under public safety addresses the state of affairs with regard to the town's law enforcement, police services, and also fire and EMS or rescue services. And so through John's efforts with the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, we solicited that input and we received a rather good, solid one-page of information from, I'm gonna presume, the chief.
No, it's actually Doug Alexander, who is the person who reviews plans for for the Fire Department, and I suspect he he did speak with the new chief of the Fire Department.
Gotcha. And so with with that lead-in, what I would like then is, because chapter five is so large, and this input that we've asked asked for is actually input that begins on page one oh one of that chapter. I would, and and we're not gonna take a motion or vote on the integration of the Fire Company's input, because then this is just a work in progress to update that and and make it ready for the twenty twenty-three plan. So at this point, I'll pause and ask if there's any aspects of that information from the Fire Company that that any of the commissioners would like to pull some strings on or discuss further? Okay. Yeah, that part.
Yeah, I just had a question. Sorry. In the bottom of the statement from Mr. Alexander, it said the town has an ordinance that provides a thousand dollars per residential building permit and mandatory review. I would, I couldn't find that. Where is that in?
It's part of our impact fees.
Oh, it's buried in the impact fees. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's that's code, chapter forty-seven dash six on permit fees and impact fees, so we'll, if we pull that into chapter five's updates, we'll probably give a code reference.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Per the code, the town does what he describes, you know, so there's so there's a reference for the public to see.
Is, pardon me, just one moment. Is it no longer a volunteer fire department? Do you have paid personnel there?
Currently, they're still using the volunteer fire company.
Are they still, they're still the volunteers? Okay.
They haven't changed their name that I'm aware of.
I know that they have paid because the volunteer status.
I know that they have paid because the volunteer status has been down, so they couldn't staff it fully with volunteers. So they now have paid employees that come into the fire department to help cover the apparatus. Right, oh, there you go.
Oh, there we are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not understood well.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Doug Alexander from the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company. In the, uh, report that I sent back to, to John, uh, this is a complete, if you will, update from what was in twenty thirteen. You'll, you'll find significant difference. In twenty thirteen, we were predominantly a volunteer fire company, we're no longer that. We are still the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, we still have to raise the money to buy the fire trucks and the ambulances, to take care of our buildings, uh, to provide for the needs of the few volunteers we have. In many years, we've, we've diminished to volunteers simply because it's, it's very difficult time-wise for someone to, uh, receive the training and so forth that is needed to provide the volunteer fire service. Now, just a rough estimate, it takes just about a year from the time you join until you're able to respond on the fire apparatus. Uh, it's, that's a lot of time, three months for your basic fire training, six months for your EMT training, and about another month for such things as hazardous materials training and the national incident management system, which is done online and for, uh, for things through the, um, um, federal emergency management. So it takes about a year to get people on, and then people just don't have that time anymore. Back when I was coming up, you know, dad went to work every morning, mom stayed home with the kids, and that's the way it was. Today, there's very few families that don't have three jobs going. Pops probably got a full-time job and a part-time job, and mom's working at least full, uh, part-time. So it's, it's a much different environment than we had, say, twenty-five, thirty years ago. Now, our, our volunteers are still there, we've still got the numbers, but we just don't have the ones who can run the call. I can't run the calls anymore. I'd love to, but I can't. I'm seventy-three years old and, and I'm gonna be, uh, uh, medically had to come off here about a year and a half ago. So, uh, those things happen to almost all of us. We still have a large contingent of personnel that are there to raise funds and serve the community in as much as, as going out and helping with the lock boxes on the homes, the smoke alarms, uh, things of this nature. And then, of course, the other public outreach that we have with our open houses and our, uh, even at our carnival, we do have some, some outreach areas and so forth. So we still have a lot of members that do that. What has happened is as of June this year, the Carroll County has developed another department, the Carroll County Department of Fire and EMS. Now, that, that department provides us currently, and this will change probably every six or eight months over the next five years. Currently, as we sit here tonight, we're assured six personnel every day, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. That's two for, uh, two for each of our two medic units and two for the first piece of apparatus out the door. Now, we'll have eight assigned, however, the eight, uh, there's two on each shift that are floaters. And there are days when we'll have seven or eight personnel at our station, but there are other days when it's just the six, depending on who calls in six across, six across the county or, or whether a station needed to be upgraded on a day for a particular reason or for a particular service, paramedic in particular. The thrust right now from, from DEFEMS is to provide medic service at all, uh, thirteen of the fourteen fire stations in the county. We have one fire station in the upper end that doesn't have an ambulance, so we don't have to worry with them. But that's the primary thrust right now, is provide medic service twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five at all thirteen fire stations across the county. Such stations as Westminster, Sykesville and Mount Airy, we're running by in large, uh, the largest number of calls in, in the county, and they've provided two medic units for those, those three stations. July fir- there's seven stations right now that are being staffed by Carroll County DEFEMS. Uh, July first, they're scheduled to take over, uh, the, the medic service at the rest of the stations. So there'll be thirteen stations then that will have, uh, career EMS people in-house to take care of their medic and ambulance services. They'll also be provided with apparatus driver in, in some cases. There'll be a lot of stations that'll have three personnel around the clock, uh, and that too will, will change from time to time. They wanna keep the minimum, and as time goes on and as the department grows, as the needs grow, uh, the, the, the department will grow in itself. Now, at Mount Airy, we have, we still have quite a few volunteers that are coming out to run the calls. We just don't have as many as we need for the number of calls we're running. Uh, you'll notice I threw the numbers in there for twenty twenty-three so we could give you just a little bit of an idea of what we're doing. Twenty-three hundred ninety-seven incidents is what we ran this past year, that's two hundred a month. That's a lot, that's a lot. Now, you'll notice that there's, there was twenty-seven hundred and some alerts, and we've get, we get that question many times, what's the difference between an incident and an alert? With incident, we go out, that's a particular situation. We may get an ambulance there and they need help getting the person out, so they call back for a manpower unit, that's another alert. And we get a lot of those, a lot of those. Uh, you'll see, I think there's like three hundred and fifty more alerts than there is incidents. But, uh, or we get out on a fire and we have to go to another alarm, or we need a special, another piece out of our house for some reason, those are the additional alerts. So twenty-seven hundred and, I forget what the exact number was, uh, number of, of alerts is, is how many times we've gotta get something on the road. So that's, that's pretty much the long and the short. And with, with about twenty-five active volunteers, that's tough, it's tough to do. So e- essentially what we're doing now is supplementing the core career force that's there. And this is gonna evolve over time. What, what's some of the reasons that the volunteers can't come out? I, I mentioned that the home situation, that's, that's just time has evolved, you know, we don't have a, we don't have people can leave the downtown businesses, run down to the old firehouse and get the, uh, units on the road. We, we just can't do that anymore. As far as home response, that is getting quite difficult too because of the traffic, the, the fact that our streets are, are as they are, there's a lot more people on the streets, walking, biking, uh, driving, et cetera. And, and, uh, you know, as far as making any time, if you will, and I'm, I'm staying away from the word speeding, so, uh, but, you know, to try to get to the firehouse in an expeditious manner is really tough right now. And, and like I said, we, we have to be stewards of safety to the community as well. So that, and that's a little bit of it, I won't say that's a large part, but that's a little bit of it. So, you know, the long and the short is we're, we got the core from Carroll County now, and the volunteers are supplementing that core. And as I said earlier, we still have to raise the money to buy the fire trucks, buy the ambulances, uh, provide, keep the station, uh, in, in a word fashion, provide for the people that are in the station, the, the supplies and so forth that we need. And then the volunteers are still out there, uh, scratching and, and kicking, trying to raise money so that we can do these things. Yes, the county does give us a good budget each year, I, I will say that Carroll County does their best to provide us as much as they can, but it's never enough, I mean, you know how that goes, all of you, I'm sure. Just to give you a little idea of what we're fighting right now, is you saw at the bottom, I listed the apparatus that we, uh, that we provide up there. We have an engine that runs, uh, most of the calls and a second engine, it's a rescue engine for the automobile accidents and things of that nature. We have a ladder truck now, which is, uh, we've only had for about two and a half years. And that is becoming more and more in need for different things. I mean, we find it's much safer to put that big ladder up than it is to climb one of the smaller ladders to get to a, a second or third story. So we, we, we've found that to be quite, quite advantageous. We've got a large capacity water tanker, now that's mostly for outside of town. Uh, you know, we get out of town, we've got the large houses, Chaladon, Paddock, those neighborhoods out there, where it's gonna take more than a fire truck load of water to put that fire out. So we have a large capacity tank with thirty-five hundred gallons. We have an ATV that we worked with the town to obtain five, six years ago, whatever it was. Uh, that is not used very much, but it's one of those things that when you need it, nothing else is gonna do. So we, we are fortunate to have that. And then we have, uh, the two, uh, medic transport units, or better known as an ambulance. Those, uh, those things are now, uh, we'll go down, run down the cost for you a little bit, we're trying to get one. In fact, the county has promised us a new one to replace our one that has almost three hundred thousand miles on it. And, uh, that ambulance is gonna cost just shy of four hundred thousand dollars. A new engine, which we have, we need to replace our rescue engine in the very near future, matter of fact, we have a committee working on that right now, is gonna cost us more or less a million dollars. Uh, our ladder truck that we bought, what, three, I guess we actually paid for it five years ago, was a million, one point three five million. Uh, and we're still paying for that, I will tell you. And so, so you can see that we, we still have to have the fundraisers, but the fundraisers that we have, have had for many years, we're finding are, are decreasing in, in, you know, what we can do with them. So, you know, the search for more fundraisers and things like that goes on. The one last thing I do wanna mention, uh, in addition to what was on here, is we have, have had a very good working relationship with the town, uh, with, with John and, and Barney and so forth. When we get these plans, uh, the ones we just reviewed here for Green Tree, and when we see these things, we can, we, we eliminate a lot of the, the little problems when we get to see these plans, and that has been really, really good for us and advantageous. We had a situation in Wildwood Park, uh, several years ago, we, we asked for all the streets to be at least twenty-four feet wide. Uh, that way we can, if car parks are, we can still get a ladder truck through, set it up, the whole works. So as long as we got a twenty-four foot right-of-way or roadway, we're doing, doing well. Unfortunately, we asked for that in Wildwood Park and didn't get it. We have an eighteen-foot roadway up there in one spot, and there's a many twenty and twenty-twos. We have been blocked out of calls twice up there, where we had to pull the cot out of the back of the ambulance and run it up the street because there was cars parked on each side and we couldn't get through. We wanna avoid that whenever possible. The cul-de-sacs, as we talked about a little bit earlier, the cul-de-sacs around town, back when Teresa, uh, Bamberger was here, she helped us work out a solution for those and they have worked quite well with the, uh, the, the long, with the courts, with the wide turning radius and the small island in the middle. Uh, the one, one thing that, that, uh, Mr., Mr. Brian brought up here, excuse me, was the parking around the outside of the circle, we get that from time to time in these circles, and that's tough because we wind up having to put the wheels up on the, over the curb to get around, particularly with the ladder truck or the tanker. Now, tanker wouldn't be in town much, but the ladder truck would. So just, just kinda something to keep in the back of your mind. But, but we have had really good success, uh, we get these things, we can draw them up, we find, we allowed to spot the hydrants if we think the hydrant should be in a little different place, turning radiuses, we look at as closely as possible. Like I say, until you get to the later stage of the plans, it's maybe a little hard to tell. Probably the only thing we've had any, and I won't even say significant problem with lately, is landscaping or the, uh, the trees and stuff. I hope the town soon buys a tree trimmer so we can trim some of these trees we put down all these streets because they're scratching the devil out of the side of the fire trucks. Not our fire trucks only, but the delivery trucks and the trash trucks and everything else. That's, that's one of the things we've gotta keep an eye on, and we have been watching that, uh, on the plans when they come in. If we see where these things are, are real close to a corner or something, we'll ask them to back it up. And, and so far, we've had no problems that I know of. So, but the ones we have, the thing we have to remember is these trees grow, and that's where the problem comes in. We just have to keep an eye on, because every five or six years, you're gonna have branches coming out over your streets and so forth, things like that. Just something to keep in mind, you know, I, I have no criticism whatsoever with the process. So I, that's kind of the long and the short, and I maybe took a little more time and I should've. Is there any questions on anything we put in here? This is as factual as I can make it. There's some, you know, the things I can't say I'm exactly proud of in there, but unfortunately, that's the way it is, you know?
Commissioner Hatley?
I, well, you just brought up the trees, so, um, you're talking about, so when we land, when we ask about the landscaping, we say evergreens. Do you prefer evergreens?
No.
Or you don't have any preference?
The tree doesn't matter.
The tree doesn't matter, okay.
The branch, you know, they, they branch out, a lot of times you see, on the site plan, we've got a tree here, and a tree here, and a tree here going down the street or something, and it may be a, a sugar maple or, or something like that. And, you know, they're, they're this big around when we plant them, or when they get this big around, they got branches out over the street. And that's where some of the problem runs in. We, we, we have chainsaws and we have used them, but we don't like to do that, so.
Any, any other commissioner, uh, Kim?
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry.
Do you have, go ahead.
I just have one more question about, you have, you, you're talking about, um, personnel, do you, are you guys allowed to go to like the, the high schools, the community colleges and start recruiting people, or is it?
We actually do that, I mean, uh, we have, through the Carroll County Volunteer Emergency Services Association, which is the association of all the volunteer fire companies in Carroll County. We have what's called EST program, Emergency Services Training Program. And we've been very fortunate, and we're getting maybe anywhere from eight to fifteen students every year that actually go to this program as part of the, uh, uh, program where, what's the word I want? I can't come up with the word, whether, for their career or their, their vocation, as part of vocational program, if you will. And they, at, at lunchtime every day, they go to the training center in Westminster and they train for that, uh, that afternoon. They're trained in firefighter one, EMT, vehicle, uh, extrication, uh, there's one more. And, and they get all these things on their school time and as part of their learning process. And we graduate anywhere from eight to fifteen, uh, just about every year. As far as recruiting for the volunteers, they don't let us to go into the school and recruit. But what we, what we do do is have the outreach programs, and of course, our junior firefighter program within the county has been one of the best feeders, I mean, it's kinda like the minor leagues in baseball, if you will. You know, you can bring those people up when they get of the proper age and, and pick up the proper training. Uh, this is, uh, this is something that, that, uh, Mount Airy was one of the first companies to do that in the county, and we started that back in nineteen fifty-nine. And there's been other companies that have done that, and we have, we've graduated a lot of folks, myself included, through that program. And we do have a junior program going right now, and right now, it's doing really well. We've got probably eighteen or so, uh, kids coming around for the training. Unfortunately, there's child labor laws that we can't do certain things with them, but, you know, they just, they can't climb the high ladders, they can't, can't use a saw, things like that. But there's other things they can do and they can learn, and just being around the process to, hopefully, if you will, catch the fever and, and wanna, you know, wanna become involved.
So you do have an interest, you just need more?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
When Carroll County staffs you guys, um, are they looking at call volume as well with staffing?
Yes.
All of the equipment?
Yes, that's, they're, they're looking, right now, our, our primary problem, uh, when, when DEFEMS was actually formed about a year and a half, two years ago, whatever it's been, and they actually put the first people on the street back in June, that was when the first group hit the street. They looked, they took a number of calls, and as I said, Westminster, Sykesville and Mount Airy, by far and away, run the most calls, uh, out of the fourteen fire stations in the county. Now, we're finding some of the other stations are rapidly catching up. Tawny Town, Winfield are, are catching up very quickly, and, and, uh, the Manchester area, they have, uh, people there. Currently, there's, you know, not all the stations are staffed, but by July, we're hoping to have them all staffed predominantly to get the medic units on the road. The upper, the, the, if you will, from the center north is still doing pretty well with their volunteers for the fire trucks.
Right.
And even down in, in this, in the selling end here, we're doing okay, we need to do better, but we're doing okay, we're getting the job done. But, um, uh, uh, they will continue to monitor that as we go, the people that, that running more calls will, will get the personnel. I'm sure that's the way it's gonna work, I mean, that's the way it's working now.
Yeah, I mean, cause as we're growing in Mount Airy.
Exactly.
We're already in a deficit so-called because we're not able to run one hundred percent of our calls.
Sure.
In Mount Airy alone.
Right, we run, and as you saw in the report, that we run into four counties.
Yeah.
And we, uh, every year, we seem to run into one of those wild calls out in the middle of nowhere. We've been to Berkeley, West Virginia, we've been to Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, we've been all these different places for different fires and so forth. And, and that's gonna happen, it's a rare occurrence, but it does happen. One thing I didn't mention, and if you'll allow me, I will, one of the things that's really stressed us has been the, uh, pressure on EMS service from the senior housing.
Yeah.
From the nursing homes, from the doctors' offices, physical training, things like that, they really putting a strain on us. There is rarely a day that we don't sit with no ambulance up here because the two of them are out somewhere. Frederick County has actually taken some of the area back that we used to run first due, and, and it's probably a good thing because, uh, uh, I don't, I don't know that we could, we could continue to cover it as well as we did before because of the increased load, uh, uh, volume. They have, uh, they worked up a system and actually found out where, between dispatch time when they dispatched a call and their communication center gave it to our communication center, our communication center then toned it out for us to respond, it was taking, you know, up to ninety seconds to do that. Well, ninety seconds, you can be another mile down the road, so that's what they did. They stretched their first due area from Frederick County side out a mile because they had a jump start on us, if you will. That has actually helped us a little bit, a, a few less runs that we have to take, you know, outside of the, uh, of our first due area.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions?
Speaking of the first due area, and you probably noted earlier, we have concerns about the growth going on in Newmarket or planned in Newmarket. Is Newmarket in your first due area?
No, no.
No, okay.
Our first due area i- is usually, it, it kind of varies because of the different areas. But we go like out Prospect Road, uh, roughly to Woodville Road, just the other side of Woodville Road. That would be just about the dri- the dividing line. We go down one forty-four as far as, uh, um, Bill Moxley Road. That, that would give you kind of an idea how far out we are first due. Now, we used to be a little bit further than that, but, but that's about where we are now, just to give you a little bit of an idea. Newmarket, I, I will have to agree with what I heard earlier, there's, there's a, a boom coming there. And how will that affect us? It's hard to say, I mean, they, they, they understand that they're gonna have to provide further protection than what they have now. Newmarket, uh, does very well for what they have, but how long they're gonna be able to handle what they have is questionable when you're looking at, you know, up to maybe five thousand more residences in their first due area. That's, that's, that's gonna mean change for them, and fortunately, they're gonna be, have the ones to deal with that. Will it affect us? Eh, maybe a little bit, we're gonna have to back them up just as they've always backed us up. So, you know, it, it may cause a, a minor, or some sort of an increase for us, but I don't think it would be a, you know, a, a real, you know, heavy load. Right.
Right. And I certainly appreciate the comment you made a moment ago with regard to the aging population here within the town of Mount Airy and the calls that you have.
That's, I mean, by and large.
And that sort of thing.
By and large, that's what's given us.
I think I speak for all the Commissioners that we all are gripping hands with regard to that reality and what we want to put in the master plan with respect to addressing services for that demographic, aging population, et cetera, et cetera. So firing EMS is keen to that very thing, so.
Our volunteers are stepping up as much as they can. I will say that. I think we have, though it's a small core, we have a core of, and I will say younger folks because they're much younger than me, but they are, they're out there doing the best they can. And they have home lives and so forth, too. They have children, and they've got soccer games and baseball and karate and everything else, and that's a lot of the things that take up time. But we do have the guys, they're giving their best and doing what they can. And fortunately, with these career people now in the station as a core, we've been able to cut out a lot of the things that they would have had to stop what they were doing at home to do. I mean, as I listed somewhere on it, the patient assists, I jotted that down just for reference sake. The ones that are killing us are the, of course, the nursing home and assisted living, the senior housing, the burn bans. You know, we have burn bans in town here, and Frederick County has a burn ban, and we run a half a dozen, can you go put this fire out because it's not supposed to be burning? We get those all the time. And the service calls for the alarm calls, you know, the malfunction of the alarm or the CO detector that doesn't work anymore and is beeping in the middle of the night or whatever the case may be. Smoke in the area, people see smoke, and they don't know what it is, and rather than go look, they call us to go look. And 99.9% of the time, it's somebody doing something that's either legal or maybe on the fringe, you know? So but it is what it is. And the patient assists, of course, you know, when I was coming up, if something happened to one of my parents, we called somebody, one of the relatives was around or a friend was around to help us. They call the fire department now. We run probably a patient assist maybe twice a day to go somewhere, somebody's falling and can't get up. We help them back up into the chair, make sure they're okay, check their blood pressure and breathing. They say they're fine, sign off, and away we go. And we do that a couple of times a day some days.
Doug, I think we have one more question from Commissioner Wallace.
So just looking at your incident total for 2023, 2397, right? I don't think you're going to know this exact number, but if you had to estimate the percentage of those calls that are going to senior living facilities?
You know what? That's a really good question. And, you know, I'll look, we might be able to do that, and I'll tell you why. Because the way we've set up our box areas or our response areas, we have a particular area that's a 1-1 box, which is downtown, 1-2 boxes someplace, 1-3 boxes. We made the Wildwood Park, that whole area up there is a box of its own, and that would give us a pretty good idea. Now, that wouldn't include places like Pleasant View Nursing Home or the physical therapy places out in Ridgeville and so forth, there's three of them out there for. So I wouldn't have those, but I could give you an idea of what that senior housing is doing.
That would be helpful.
And Lorian, you know, because that's right in there. I'll see what I can dig up, and it may take me a few days because I'll have to get one of the computer gurus to dig into that for me.
Thank you.
And if possible, what's happening over time, what you're noticing?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, that's what we're noticing. I mean, the increase, and this has been going on for several years. I mean, they're just increasing, increasing, increasing. And of course, with the senior citizen housing, one family moves out, another one moves in, or one vacates that house, another senior family moves in. And that's, you know, that's going to be a number that's constantly changing, and, you know, you get, you get some of the, what's a polite name? Folks who call us more than often than absolutely necessary, that just complicates the problem.
Right.
So, you know, nothing's ever going to be perfect, but we try to keep it so that we're giving the best service we can.
Commissioner Vida?
Thank you. There was, and I've read this somewhere, and please back me up if this isn't why, there was something I read where Bartholos was going to get a fire station at some point, I guess off of 144 or Bartholos Road or something like that. It was actually in our master plan, I think I read it somewhere.
There was a time.
13?
Yeah, there was a time, and this has been several years ago now, when we were having some issues getting out on the calls, that Frederick County Fire and Rescue Services, the career staff there, had looked to rent a building right out on Rising Ridge Road to put an engine and ambulance in. And they looked at the feasibility and then realized, well, maybe that's not the best of ideas. Apparently, there was some discussion that we weren't getting out fast enough, or we couldn't provide the service for their area or something like that, and they actually investigated it, but it never panned out. I mean, quite frankly, it was an effort in futility on their part and probably an unnecessary effort altogether. So but now, I will say that with the growth in Oakdale, you know, the west side of Frederick, with the growth in Oakdale, the growth is proposed in the Green Valley area as well as the Newmarket-Linganore area, certainly it's a possibility. I mean, I wouldn't project or, you know, try to guess at all, but when you stop and look at it, well, maybe it makes sense. I mean, here again, as far as anything being official or on the drawing board or anything like that, no, there's nothing.
Well, Doug, let me.
A hypothetical question for you. As Mount Airy Crossing continues to evolve, and there's, it seems like the other side of the street is going to be a lot of senior housing, what would your perspective be in that plan if it is to remain senior housing, to have some kind of emergency response like in that area?
Well, that would be tough to do.
Handle all of the people that call all day long?
Yeah.
I mean, you can get, so you're getting like eight calls a day right now.
Right.
That can double with this new development, or it could even go up higher than that. You could be having 15 calls a day.
Right.
I mean, that's.
It, this is one thing that I will say right off the bat here, is the fire department has taken no position on this. That's not something we've ever done, is taken a position on, we want to have this development or we don't. We will provide, whether it goes or whether it doesn't go, we will provide the service somehow, even if it means mutual aid. I mean, never, never fall back on the fact that, well, we just can't do it. We will find a way. Like I say, Lisbon knows the trail up here, Newmarket knows the trail down, Damascus knows the trail over, and Winfield knows the trail over, so, you know, always somebody will be coming. Now, they may not be there as quick as we could have been had our ambulances been available, but I, you know, as far as the development itself, it is what it is, and we'll deal with it one way or another. Does it mean that perhaps we have to put a third unit in service someday and hopefully get personnel from Carroll County to do it? I guess that's a possibility, but certainly that's not something we could project right now, you know, as we are still in the building stage, if you will.
In the, in the fire profession such as you're in, is there any ratio that you know of that says X dwelling units means X personnel and Y apparatus?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Not that I know of.
I'm just thinking of.
I see where you're coming from, yeah.
You see where I'm going, right?
Yeah, I do.
My angle as well.
Right, right. Some algorithm that guides us as to adequacy.
Yeah, I can't say that I've ever seen that. It sounds like it could be done certainly, and maybe there is an algorithm out there somewhere. I mean, that's something I'll open my eyes and see if I can find, but.
Of course, you've got all different kinds of units, commercial, industrial, hazardous waste, non-hazardous.
ISO is about the only thing that gives us any parameters at all. The insurance services organization, they, of course, they, I'm sure Barney and John realize what they do with the water system in town here. They evaluate that every so many years. And they projected in this particular area, we needed to have one unit that could pump X number of gallons or something like that.
Sure.
But as far as ancillary units or ambulances or anything like that, no, there's nothing out of ISO that would help with that.
Gotcha. Any other Commissioner interaction?
I just want to say on behalf of all of us, thank you so much, Doug. This is, this is a.
Yes, thank you.
You know, I don't often throw accolades, but you've been a real model partner with us on this segment within the update effort.
We will continue to be, believe me. We want to, we've worked so well with the town, towns work so well with us, and we want to continue that.
Well, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for my opportunity to speak tonight.
Absolutely. One other section in Chapter Five's script tonight had to do with a section that begins on page 104, which addresses parks and recreation. And John, any input from that Commission?
And I thought Mike Regal was supposed to be here this evening, but I don't see him.
Okay, okay.
And I never received any correspondence from him with that regards.
And then, and I should double back here to public services, any input from Chief Ginevra?
Chief Ginevra, no.
No, okay. So we'll just pursue those two?
I'll reach out again tomorrow and see if I can get something in writing.
Okay. Then unless the Commissioners have another approach on Chapter Five, again, this was a focus on public services and the open space rec portions within Chapter Five. So we'll continue to work in those areas where we still need a little bit of information. I don't prefer to go into the other sections of Chapter Five because we've already had three reviews on those preceding sections. And so what I would offer to do is pending this additional information, we'll take Mr. Alexander's input, we'll update his section of public safety. I'll do one last run-through for all the other portions, and we'll get to now our fourth draft, I think it'll be, and we'll angle toward that draft being hung out on the public parking lot for public review and comments. So that'll be kind of the path. That's what we'll aim toward unless there's a better approach. Okay. Then unless there's further comment on Chapter Five from the audience, good, then I'll move to our last item, which is reports and other business, and we'll begin with Councilman Evans' report on council activity, please.
Second, let me just pull it up real quick. So before we go into his report, I do want to say, do you want to try to figure out the timing of our public hearing for the next meeting?
Oh, yeah, we can do that, certainly.
While he's pulling stuff up, so.
Right, you want to give us the background? That's on the water allocation yield capacities, right?
Right, the different capacities. So that's going to be next month, and again, we have to hold a public hearing prior to that discussion. And my thought was either holding it ready at 7:30 just before our meeting starts or start it at 7:15 with a public hearing and then, you know, take public comment and then basically, you know, be able to, everybody would have to be here so that we could, you know, be able to take that public comment and utilize it in your discussion. So I don't know what your, what everybody's thoughts.
And again, and again, this is for the public to take a look at the foreseeable demands, AKA projects, right, and how those allocations will be spread across our code-driven water allocation categories.
Correct.
Man.
You're good.
I got it.
I have to do this every two years.
And every two years we do this, right? Because this needs to be done by the Commission in order to tee it up in April for the council.
Correct.
Okay. And then prior to us putting a signature or a recommendation to the council on that, a public hearing has to be given or offered. So the question again from John is, our normal start time in March would be 7:30. Do we want to start with a public hearing at 7:15 or start it at 7:30? It's a scheduling question for your time.
I'm okay with either 7:15 or 7:30, it doesn't.
March 25th, correct? Yep. You won't be here at all? Okay.
25th, I'm checking my calendar as well. I'm supposed to be out of town.
No, we're talking about the Planning Commission meeting. We're going to get into March 14th in just a minute on the master plan, but March 25th, Monday evening, is the March Planning Commission meeting, and we need to start it off with a public hearing, 7:15?
Brian's checking. I've been trying to see if I'm still available that day or not. I know I'm going out of town, but I think I'm here that week, I'm here for that date.
You're good?
So coming in a bit early for that should be, should be okay?
I can make 7 or 7:15, either one.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's, either one's fine.
So John, 7:15, you would?
7:15 is probably okay. I mean, what do you think, Barney, with the amount of public?
Public interactions.
There's only one or two people that potentially are going to speak.
Yeah, usually we don't have a lot of input.
Might be nobody.
Okay, 7:15 is fair?
Okay, I just want to get the ad.
So we'll get that announcement out for the public's March 25th opportunity to, and then we'll move right into an agenda item on that allocation on that same evening, right?
Yes. Because you have to vote on it.
Correct, yes.
If we start at 7:15 with the public hearing, then the meeting itself will start at 7:30, so there might be a lapse of, you know, five minutes or something.
I'm with you, right, right. A little break in there.
Tom has something.
Are we, are we going to vote, or are you all going to vote on Resolution Number 2024-1 to set the priority areas? Has that already occurred? That's on the agenda tonight.
That?
That is the revised agenda, which I did not send to you. So that's the categories that we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about. He's talking about the priority areas.
I'm talking about the priority areas. So one of the categories is priority areas within the town. We've had the same map for probably since the inception of this whole process. By resolution, the Planning Commission is to adopt the priority areas, so we know the areas of the town that that category will be allocated to. The division of allocation is separate from that. That's, that comes later. So that's what Resolution Number 2024-1 was about. I think under the code, it's about this, roughly about this time of year that every two years that the priority areas are set.
And that would have to occur prior to the categories? Could they, could they happen simultaneously? Could we do the, could that be on next month's agenda as well? Because it's not on this agenda.
Okay.
And I don't know if, that probably needs to be notified in the public as well, I would think.
Yeah, there should be a public hearing on that.
Are you referring to?
This resolution right here we're voting on tonight, it says this day, February 26.
Different.
Correct. That, so that's what I thought, I know there's been a revised agenda that I haven't seen, but I thought that was on the agenda for tonight, and usually we attach the map.
You're referring to 10919? Are you looking at the code now or no?
I can find it.
109-19.2B?
2B, okay. 192B.
That's division of categories.
Right, this is categories.
This notes 109-194B.
4, I think it is 4B actually.
And it also says, whereas the public hearing was due, notice for it occurred in the same date which this resolution was adopted, a map depleting the proposed priority areas is made available to the public, and the opportunity was provided for public comment.
So it'll have to take place in March.
So we have to have a public comment?
The ordinance lays out a march toward ultimately an allocation among categories. And it starts with setting what is the total yield, how much water can be allocated. And then the second part is, is that this body sets what it means for the one category in terms of priority areas is typically the downtown area. It might include, for instance, possibly the mobile home park possibly, although that could be allocated under a separate category. So in other words, there's a priority map that we have had and adopted every two years, and again, it's been the same, but that's what this step is talking about. And I think under the code, the way it's supposed to occur is, you know, this occurs and then you allocate a month later.
So 4B first.
Yeah.
Priority area resolution.
Right.
Then 4A, yield capacity allocation across the categories.
Among the categories, that's correct.
Okay. And prior to the yield capacity allocations, we're required in 4A to have a public hearing.
Yes.
So can we get all three into March?
Well, now, that's something else, does this resolution need, require a public hearing as well?
Yes.
Okay, so can we do that?
My suggestion would be to take this, now we need the map that goes with this resolution to be attached to it.
Okay.
Whatever that's, whatever's going to be proposed, whether it includes the mobile home park or not.
There's it right here.
And that, my suggestion is you do a public hearing in March on both this resolution and the allocation.
Right.
Then you all would vote on the, and decide, okay, what are the, what does it mean to be in a priority area?
Priority area.
And then take the next resolution, which I gather will be number dash three.
Well, the map, the map probably will change because the trailer park is not in the priority area, and that map amendment is really just for the water priority, right?
True, but you could allocate out of the emergency, we have another category called emergency for the case we're ordered to extend water outside the town.
So I think we're talking about two different priority areas. So this is a priority area that basically encompasses the downtown and the center street quarter up to 27. Does include like on the other side of 27. That is your priority area that this is talking about. The priority area that the mobile home park needs to be added is to the county water and sewer master plan priority area of what those priority areas where we're giving water and sewer to in the very near future. So that's, I think we're talking two different things, so this would not include that mobile home park.
But I, but I think however we cast the downtown and however we address the extension into the mobile har, mobile home park, we have a requirement to establish a priority area. We have.
Correct.
We have to sign a resolution that's good for the next two years.
Correct.
And that requires a public hearing separate than the yield capacity allocation?
It's normally separate because it's typically done in separate meetings, but here, I'm suggesting we're going to need to do it in March.
Okay, so I think what, so we have two actions here, but they're preceded by two specific public hearings.
That's right.
And can all 4B put on an agenda in March?
I think so.
Yeah, we typically don't have a lot of comment on either.
I understand, okay.
Do that because both of these go back to Town Council in April.
In April.
That's right.
Right. So let me suggest this then, with this good info and catch on 4B and that resolution priority area approval, why don't we get together and put that agenda together early on for March and make sure it has Tom's review that, you know, we're all doing the right thing to get to those two decisions?
Right, the two public hearings and then the two decisions inside the.
Exactly. Yep, yep. And so I think going back, 7:15 start is still okay, that we start the first hearing, and then that may mean we start the second one in 7:30, and then we move into the agenda. So if you want to make both notifications for two separate public hearings.
On the same night.
And I think we.
Minutes apart.
It happens to Town Council all the time.
Yes, okay. All right. Wow, I'm looking forward to March. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, John, Barney. Back to Councilman, we didn't forget you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead, yeah.
Sure. So for the February 5th Town Council meeting, we have one new appointment. Tom Neff was unanimously reappointed to recycling and beautification. We had a bond released for the Pine Grove subdivision, which was approved five to zero, and then we have the PWA for the Dennis subdivision, which was also approved five to zero. For ordinances and resolutions, we had charter amendment Resolution 2024-1 that was approved unanimously, which states council president does not have a vote on council while serving as acting mayor. Resolution 2024-1, which we're just talking about for establishing the town's available water and sewer capacity yield for 2024-25 was adopted by a five-nothing vote. Ordinance 2024-1 introduced by a five-zero vote, budget amendment to add $20,000 to the general fund capital budget, $10,000 from Mount Airy Historical Society, and $10,000 from a preservation grant. Ordinance 2024-2 was introduced with a five-nothing vote to repeal the Cable Television Commission and establish the Commission on Aging and Livability. And our next meeting is Monday coming up, and that concludes my report for you guys.
Thank you so much. Any commissioner questions to Councilmember Evans on that report or activities? Thank you so much. John, zoning administrator?
Yep, you have that in your packet as well. I don't know if you have any questions related to that. We had four Carroll County building permits total, and that was an existing, renovations to two parcels, and then we have, of course, the 11 total permits, fence two, banner three, and sign six.
Thank you. And a quick question, I'm starting to see advertising for Shiny Shell to begin business with, with advertising for subscriptions, so I guess they are, they're going to go through a punch list here shortly with the town.
Is that on the website or actually?
It's on their Facebook website.
Okay.
Facebook web.
Yep. The next two items.
Scrolling for the $2 a month for Worldwide Web.
I'll, I'll close on the next two items. The 2023 master plan work session date for our next review is March 14th at 7:30. That is at Town Hall. John, I believe.
Yes, and then we.
And our topics are, we'll do a first scrub of Chapter Nine within the 2013 master plan, and then we will have the second review of Chapter Eight. And then also, if we can get a status on, John, you and Barney working those tweaks in the chapters three and four that we had talked about, I think it was February 8th that we, we gave you some final tweaking on that. And again, we're trying to drive three and four into the parking lot, so. So that's a rich evening, first scrub of nine, second scrub of eight, and then a quick look at that fine tuning on three and four. And then the very last item is our next Planning Commission meeting. We've already talked about it, March 25th. We'll precede that meeting with a 7:15 public hearing on 109194B, the priority area resolution, and then we'll move into 7:30 with the second hearing and then on into the agenda. So March 25th, a busy evening. I'm going to poll the commissioners for any last items. Commissioner Wallace, Commissioner Binek, Commissioner Butts, Commissioner Hatley, Commissioner Vida, Commissioner O'Reilly. Good. Then I move to adjourn to this evening's meeting. It is 9:45. Thank you.
Thank you.